Samantha Gill, I'm the Public Services Manager here at the Hays Public Library. Thank you all for attending the final presentation in the Sorting Out Race Speaker Series here at HBL. The accompanying exhibit will be up until the end of the day on Sunday, so if you haven't checked it out, please make sure that you do so. I also want to thank Humanity Kansas as well as the Schmidt Foundation for providing funding for these events. It has also been a wonderful collaboration between HBL and the History Department at FHSU, specifically with Ken Perez. So now, before I introduce our speaker for tonight, I do want to plug an event that will be at FHSU on October 22 at 3:00 p.m. It'll be in Elkins Hall, Room 169, and it's called Seeing Red on Red: The Construction of the Indian American Popular Culture and Sports by Dr. Cornell...
Paywa Wardy.
Paywa Wardy, yes. So now, without further ado, I would like to introduce our speaker for this evening. Jeff Holy has been with the National Park Service as both a volunteer and a park ranger for close to six years at parks across the country, including Franklin D. Roosevelt and Harry S. Truman National Historic Sites and Joshua Tree National Park. He joined the staff at Brown v. Board of Education in Topeka in May of 2023. Foley was born and raised in Wichita, so without further ado, please welcome Jeff.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate it. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
It's that theatrical training from Wichita State. Let's see if we can give this a shot here. Well, I'm really, really pleased to be here tonight with everybody, and this is a presentation that we've been talking about a lot this year because 2024 is 70 years since Brown v. Board of Education, May 17 of 1954. So we've had a chance to really travel around the country and present this program. I have modified this program for my Kansas audience, so I've slipped in several slides that will make a lot more sense to you guys than they would if I was in Wilmington, Delaware, as I was earlier in the week, presenting that as Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. For me, that's earlier in the week. But yeah, without any further ado, let's go ahead and get started here. So a couple of questions for you. First of all, how many of you have been to Brown v. Board of Education in Topeka, Kansas? See a show of hands there? Couple of you there. So we are located where the A is, 1515 Southeast Monroe Street, very, very close to the state capital in Topeka, and very easy to get to off of I-70. I-70, we jokingly say that I-70 is our bread and butter. So many people that are heading destinations elsewhere will stop because we are right off of I-70, so we are really fortunate in that regard. So show of hands, I've said some of you have been to our park, but another question for you then is, show of hands for those of you that have been to other national park sites here in the state of Kansas. So show of hands for those of you. A lot more hands went up that time. So for those of you that don't know, the other national park sites, we're really fortunate to have five parks in Kansas. It's really unusual for a state the size of Kansas for us to have five, but we have Nicodemus National Historical Site, which is pretty close to here. How many of you have been to Nicodemus? If not, they recently had their home coming there. That's the former enslaved African-American settlement there in Nicodemus. We also have Fort Larnet, of course, National Historic Site. That's the army post from the 1860s, 1870s. We also have Tallgrass Prairie National Preserve. How many of you have been to Tallgrass? Really, one of my favorite, and especially for those of you that aren't from this part of the country, the students, on some spring or fall day, you should spend an entire day and hike the 37 miles of trails at Tallgrass Prairie. 11,000 acres of uncultivated prairie, really one of the best-kept secrets in the state of Kansas. When I was a kid, it was called the Zbar Ranch. Does anybody remember it called the Zbar Ranch? It was actually a working ranch when I was a kid. And then, of course, we have Fort Scott National Historic Site. That was a military fort established in 1842, sort of in southern, southeast Kansas, which is really another amazing place that you should check out. So that's a shameless plug for other parks of the National Park Service. So, all right, so let's get into the presentation. So Brown v. Board of Education, National Historical Parks, Visitor Center, Exhibits, and Staff Offices are all housed in the former Monroe Elementary School, one of Topeka's four historically segregated African-American elementary schools in the city of Topeka. Constructed at a cost of $110,000, it opened in 1927, and it was designed by the city's preeminent architect, Thomas Williamson, who was the architect of the city's Topeka High School. If you've ever seen this, very close to the state capital. This opened in 1931. Obviously, a real radical departure in terms of the architecture. People often mistake this high school as a cathedral, a church, because it's just so uncommon to have so much architecture in a high school building, especially one that opened in 1931. So the most common question when people come to 1515 Southeast Monroe Street to Brown v. Board of Education, besides, of course, where are the bathrooms located, is, what is Brown v. Board? So the name Brown v. Board has changed over time, especially in the last 20 years. The name has meant something different. But if you look at Brown v. Board as a total, as a whole, what is Brown? Brown is five separate lawsuits, mostly filed by African-American parents against school districts in Kansas, Delaware, District of Columbia, Virginia, and South Carolina between 1950 and 1951. Separate but equal facilities and conditions for African-American students violated the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution as racial segregation violated those principles. And then finally, what is Brown v. Board? The majority of these cases lost or scored slight victories at the lower federal courts, but they were all collectively heard on appeal under our court case title at the Supreme Court. So they were all heard in their individual localities. Most of them lost in lower federal courts, but by the time they got to the Supreme Court docket, they were just commonly known as Brown v. Board. That doesn't mean our court case was any more important or less important than the other four cases. Really, our case just happened to be sitting on the Supreme Court appeals docket when they just thought, well, let's just put these all together. So again, collectively heard on appeal, all known as Brown v. Board of Education.
Why Brown?
Oliver Brown was a local pastor and a local welder in Topeka, and he, along with 12 other parents, sued the school board in Topeka. And we'll talk about that in just a second. So how did we get Brown? How did we get segregation in Kansas? What was really the foundation from a national perspective for segregation in the United States? And that really started with Plessy v. Ferguson in 1890. So in 1890, there was a Separate Car Act of Louisiana, which required equal but separate train car accommodations for African and white passengers within the state. And then June 17, 1892, Homer Plessy, who was one-eighth black, was arrested in New Orleans for refusing to move from a train car that was reserved for white passengers. Found guilty of violating Louisiana state law, the case of Plessy v. Ferguson was appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court. So in 1896, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that racial segregation laws did not violate the U.S. Constitution as long as the facilities for each race were equal in quality, a doctrine that became known as "separate but equal." So here are some images of what "separate but equal" looked like. And does anybody remember a time in Kansas or anywhere they were traveling where they might have seen signs like this or designations like this? So here's a fun fact, especially for the people younger than me. It's the same water. There's no distinction in the water source for these drinking fountains, okay? But this was very, very common, especially in the American South, to see that. This is a movie theater where you had to have a separate accommodation for African-Americans, so often they went up fire escapes, paid a separate admission, but they were allowed to sit in the balconies to watch most of the movies that were shown at the main theater there.
That was discrimination of color. It was only 10 cents, and the white was $4, though.
So Plessy v. Ferguson supported the principle of legalized racial segregation in all aspects of American life, including public educational facilities, which is how we got to Brown v. Board. So here's some other examples of what this looked like in the United States. In this instance, benches, just a place to sit. So it would take another 58 years between Plessy v. Ferguson in 1896 and Brown v. Board of Education in 1954 for the U.S. Supreme Court to begin the process of dismantling legalized racial segregation in the United States. Can you imagine between 1896 and 1954, you lived in a separate but equal America? Especially if you are African-American. That was your reality, especially if you lived in the southern part of the United States. So again, really, really interesting that it took 58 years to have some sort of actual Supreme Court action to begin the process of dismantling "separate but equal" in the United States. This is a very famous picture of our school, Monroe Elementary School. Very, very famous photo from 1949, showing one of the second-grade classes. All the children were very politely asked to put their hands in their laps. And we're going to get back to Alice Fay Lee here towards the end of the exhibit as well, towards the end of my presentation. But a very, very famous picture was used in all national publications at the time to show what would a typical segregated school look like in Topeka, Kansas. So let's talk about segregation in Kansas. And again, how many native Kansans do we have in the audience? Native Kansans? Okay, I had a, no, not really, was that a sort of maybe native or close to being native, been here long enough? So let's talk about segregation in Kansas. And we'll start with the Kansas-Nebraska Act of 1854. For those of you that didn't notice, as Kansas and Nebraska were forming, it was determined that states got to decide whether they were going to be pro-slavery or anti-slavery factions. So that was really their choice as those territories were forming. And of course, that led to a period of tremendous political chaos and bloodshed known as Bleeding Kansas, a very, very violent part of our history, in fact, so violent that when I was a kid and had to go to the state capital and look at the John Brown mural, it just terrorized me. So those of you that don't know, this, of course, is John Brown, an abolitionist from Connecticut that came to the Kansas Territory, and he was known as an individual that brought anti-slavery efforts to the state, and he led anti-slavery guerrillas in this Kansas Territory. And these actions really kind of gave him a national face of abolitionism in the United States and specifically in the state of Kansas as the state was forming. And this, of course, is the mural in the state capital, tragic prelude by American regionalist painter John Stuart Curry. Even looking at it now still terrorizes me from when I was a kid. And it's huge. If you've never seen this mural, it's on the second floor of the state capital along with some other John Stuart Curry murals and lots and lots of symbolism there in the mural.
So, excuse me, what book is he holding out?
This would be the Bible. Yeah, we've got soldiers from both sides, Union and Confederacy, we have, and I've cut those off at the bottom. We have soldiers below that are unfortunately passed away. And it's a really, we have a Kansas tornado that's blowing in the corner, and then we have a prairie fire that's also happening. It's a, it's a large mural, probably 20 feet, yeah, 20 feet wide.
I'm like you, it's terrifying.
Terrifies me. So again, we had Bleeding Kansas, we had Kansas Territory. So then January 29, 1861, Kansas is admitted as a free state. Of course, just a couple of months after Kansas is admitted, something called the Civil War starts, April of 1861. Our Kansas Bill of Rights, Number 6, says slavery prohibited. There shall be no slavery in this state. That was the first time a state, joining the Union, actually wrote in their Bill of Rights, "We forbid slavery." So this was really, really a significant event and specific language that was happening in our state when the state was formed. So what happens then after 1861? 1868, Kansas state law allowed but did not require separate schools for African-American students. Then about 10 years later, the legislature jumped back and says, "Well, we're going to enact a civil rights law that prohibits racial discrimination in any state university, college, or other school of public instruction or any place of public accommodation." So in this really short period, they're kind of flip-flopping here. What are we going to do? What are we going to do? Are we going to have separate schools? Are we not going to have separate schools? And that's in 1876, they made that determination and make that law. But only three years later, in 1879, the Kansas Legislature passes a state, excuse me, a statute allowing first-class cities in Kansas to operate separate primary schools based on race. And that's 1879. This is the first Monroe School in Topeka, Kansas, and this photo is from 1892. This is the third and fourth grade class. So well, after 1879, by 1892, schools in Topeka are in fact segregating. And this is, again, one of the earliest pictures we have, and again, the first Monroe School in the city of Topeka. So why did Kansas segregate elementary schools? We just talked about state law, we've talked about Bleeding Kansas, we've talked about these efforts to not segregate and then to segregate. Well, at the time Monroe School opened in 1927, Topeka was a city of about 65,000 residents with African-Americans making up about 6% of the majority white population. So 90% white, 6% African-American, and then other minority groups made up that small difference. But there was a really, a very, very thriving African-American community in our state capital at about Fourth and Quincy. Of course, it's all been cleared by urban renewal long ago. But this was sort of the center of African-American life at Fourth and Quincy. This was the apex theater that was African-American-owned and operated. This is somewhat of a hard image for many of you to take a look at, but while Topeka was not a Jim Crow or a segregated city in all aspects of life, most restaurants, hotels, and other public places were usually segregated in practice, but not by law. And this is a gathering of the local chapter of the KKK from Topeka at an event in Topeka. So again, we weren't a Jim Crow or a segregated city by law, but we definitely were by practice. This was happening. In fact, this is the early Gage Park swimming pool in the city's main park, but this was segregated well into the early 1960s, this swimming pool was. So... So why were African-Americans coming to Kansas? What was the big push to have, and why were African-Americans settling in the state of Kansas? This was a flyer that was passed around, especially in the state of Kentucky. It was to encourage African-Americans to join this organization. It was filming, forming a land company, and they were trying to get people to move, pay a small fee, and you could move to places like Nicodemus, Ellis, Vogue, other places like that, sort of in that part of Kansas. But it was an effort to get more African-Americans and to develop those parts of the state. So Exodus was a name that was given to African-Americans who migrated from states along the Mississippi River to Kansas as part of the Exodus or the Exodus Movement of 1879. And again, this is from 1877. But I want to show you this. I think this is a really interesting statistic of what was happening. So we have Kansas, of course, we have Oklahoma, Missouri, but look at the black population of Kansas. In 1860, before Kansas became a state, the population of the entire state was 627. By 1880, 43,110 African-Americans were listed on the National Census for the state of Kansas. This extraordinary population increase in just 20 years really hardened the attitudes towards African-American residents that resulted in a measure designed to specifically discourage future African-Americans to settle in Kansas. And how did that happen? It was called the first-class cities designation that legally allowed the segregation of elementary schools. So we can't have slavery in the state. You know, we're well past slavery, but gee, what can we do? What can we do? We don't want Kansas to become this entirely black state. I mean, look at that, look at that staggering population increase in just 20 years. So we need to have a way of controlling that. What can we do?
Do you know about what the population of all of Kansas was then?
It was about 900,000, 900,000, less than a million in Kansas by 1880 with that census. But that was a staggering number. If you can imagine, you're a Kansas legislator, and you've been around for a couple of years, and then suddenly you're looking at the National Census and you're thinking, what can we do here? So again, the effort was to legally discourage African-Americans from moving to the state by creating what was called first-class cities. So in 1880, there were only two first-class cities in the state of Kansas, and that would have been Leavenworth and Topeka. Those were the only two cities in the state of Kansas. And how did you become a first-class city? What did you have to do to become a first-class city? Well, the first thing you had to do was have a population of at least 15,000 residents. So in 1880, those were the only two cities in the entire state that met that population requirement. But by 1950, 10 additional first-class cities were segregating African-American children in elementary schools as far west as Salina and Wichita. The only city that could have segregated African-American children, any guesses? It's sort of towards the west of the state. Any guesses?
Hutchinson.
Hutchinson is correct, sir. You win the imaginary prize. Hutchinson could have done it, but they had the population requirement that they chose not to create a separate school. And I think that's because they didn't have enough of an African-American population to warrant the construction of a separate school. But is anybody surprised by that? By 1950, 12 cities in the state were legally segregating African-American children, but only in elementary schools. And this is also really, really key. That first-class cities statute only allowed the segregation of what they used to call primary schools because in 1880, most kids are not going to go to school after the end of their sixth grade or the eighth grade. But as junior highs and senior highs were forming in these communities, they were to be integrated. So only elementary schools were segregated. And here's some examples of what that looked like across the state. November 17, 1922, this is the Dunbar School, the dedication of it, in Salina, Kansas. This is in Lincoln School. This is in Atchison, 1921. This is in Fort Scott. This is the Second Plaza or the Hawkins School in Fort Scott, Kansas. And then something happened in Kansas City, Kansas, which didn't happen in any of those other 11 cities. There was a bit of a racial conflict in Kansas City, Kansas. And so the state law that prohibited the segregation of public high schools was changed for Kansas City, Kansas only, to allow just that city to create a separate high school for African-American students. And that was called Sumner High School. It was an all-black high school in Kansas City, Kansas. It still exists in a different form, a newer building, but that, again, was the only city out of those 12 cities in the state that were legally allowed to have a segregated African-American high school in our state of Kansas, in the free state, in the state that joined the Union that didn't allow slavery. So now we're moving to Topeka, and we're going to talk about the segregated elementary schools in Topeka. So by 1950, there were four African-American elementary schools in Topeka. Any guesses how many white elementary schools there were? I will tell you this, the population in 1950 was just shy of 80,000 people. So if we had four African-American elementary schools, how many white elementary schools did we have in the city? Any guesses? Just call out some numbers.
15?
15? Any other?
12.
12? We had 18 all-white elementary schools. Four African-American elementary schools, 18 all-white elementary schools. So Buchanan Elementary, 1920 to 1962. And this is really important to keep the tabs on these dates because as integration happened with the Supreme Court decision of '54, they basically just shut down most of these schools. So Buchanan, McKinley Elementary, do we see a pattern here, a theme of naming the schools? Washington Elementary School closes in 1962. And then, of course, Monroe Elementary, which is where Brown v. Board is located, that closed in 1975. This is really important, and a really important takeaway for you guys as well. While these schools were segregated, they were built to the same standards and the same quality as the all-white elementary schools in the city. So they didn't distinguish or differentiate the building materials. Remember that this school was designed by the city's preeminent architect, Thomas Williamson. So that wasn't it. It was never an issue of the quality of the schools. It was the inequality of having to attend one of four schools if you lived across the street from one of the 18 all-white elementary schools. It wasn't the quality, it was the inequality of not being able to choose the elementary school to go to if you are African-American. All right. So before Brown v. Board of Education, this is also something that you might not know about for you Kansans. Before Brown became part of the national legal landscape, there were 11 cases, 11 African-American cases in Kansas challenging segregated public schools across the state. Ottawa, Independence, Topeka, Kansas City, Coffeyville, Wichita, Parsons, Galena, where is Galena? Coffeyville, Topeka, Topeka, and then South Park, Johnson County, which is basically now Overland Park. 11 cases between 1881 and 1949 to stop segregated elementary schools from happening in the state. And all of those cases were heard by the Kansas Supreme Court. It really became the venue for the constitutional question of whether public schools could be segregated. While most of these cases experienced victories at the Kansas Supreme Court, including this case right here, the Graham versus the Board of Education, why was Brown v. Board of Education so successful? Why was our case, which was case number 12, what made Brown more successful than the other 11 cases? And by the way, the Graham case in 1941, between 1880 and 1941, if you were an African-American elementary school child going to school in Topeka, you would have had to go to elementary school until the end of your eighth grade. Even when junior high schools were created, you were not allowed to matriculate onto your junior high school setting because they wanted to keep African-American kids in segregated schools as long as possible. So the Graham family stepped up and sued the school board and took it to the Supreme Court and said, "This is not legal. We are supposed to allow our children to matriculate onto junior highs at the completion of their elementary school." And so that changed at Topeka in 1941. Kansas Supreme Court said, "You could no longer do that." But our case was number 12. And why did our court case have a real impact? And that's because the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People was involved in our court case and the other four court cases of Brown v. Board. For those of you that don't know about the NAACP, it was formed in 1909, partially in response to violence against African-Americans. And in 1940, it really changed. They created the Legal Defense Fund. That was, first director of that was Thurgood Marshall, who later became a Supreme Court Justice. And that was created to achieve racial justice, equality, and inclusive society in the United States. So what was sort of a political action committee before that suddenly became this Legal Defense Fund, much more involved in court cases at that point in 1940. Prior to Brown, and this is really important to understand as well, NAACP segregation cases typically focused on, "Well, in this community, schools are inferior," or "in this community, those curriculums are not up to standards," or "there's a lack of transportation, there's not school buses provided." But with Brown v. Board, for the first time, they looked at the constitutionality of segregation. Was segregation legally allowed in the United States? Was it a violation of the Fifth Amendment, due process, and the Fourteenth Amendment equal protection clause? And so it changed with Brown. They became a lot more broader-based. They didn't look at those nitpicky things anymore. They looked at that larger issue of segregation. And so the NAACP's involvement with our court cases really, really gave our court case a lot more traction. Speaking of the five court cases, let's talk about the five court cases of Brown. So before I do that, how many states in the United States in 1950 had some form of segregation for African-American students? And this could be from kindergarten to college. How many states in the United States in 1950 had some form of segregation? Any guesses? Call out a number. 21 states in 1950, and we're missing Hawaii and Alaska here, had some form of segregation. You can see that Kansas is probably hard to... You can see that Kansas is probably hard to see, but Kansas is one of four states that permitted segregation. Segregation mandated in all those southern states. Look at where the other four court cases of Brown are located. So we have Belton, Gula in Delaware. We have Bowling v. Sharp in District of Columbia, Davis County in Virginia, and Briggs v. Elliott in South Carolina. All of those states had mandated segregation with the exception of Brown in Topeka, which was segregation was permitted, but only for elementary schools. Does that shock anybody in nineteen fifty that almost half of the states had some form of segregation? Not that long ago. Not that long ago, this was happening in the United States. So the five cases of Brown, again, Brown v. Board of Topeka, Delaware, District of Columbia, Virginia, and South Carolina, the five cases of Brown. Now again, all of these cases have been heard in lower federal courts. Most of those cases had lost. And most of those cases were typically started by African American parents suing school boards on the things that we've just talked about. So again, the five court cases of Brown. So finally, he's going to talk about Brown v. Board in Topeka. All right, we're there, folks. Brown v. Board. So in nineteen fifty-one, Oliver Brown and twelve African American female parents, led by the local NAACP chapter, filed a class-action lawsuit in U.S. federal court in Topeka against the Topeka Board of Education on behalf of their twenty children. So thirteen parents were suing on behalf of their twenty children, alleging that its segregation policy, that the school district's segregation policy was unconstitutional as it violated the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Now, ladies, twelve women, one man. Do you think they could have named the lawsuit after any one of the twelve women? It's nineteen fifty-one. Oliver Brown is a man of color, but he's the only man. So I guess we're going to have to go with Oliver Brown. He wasn't even the first one in alphabetical order, but he was the only man. So that's who we're going to name this lawsuit after. And while the federal district court in Topeka ruled in support of the school district, they did recognize that segregation was having a negative impact towards the students in Topeka. So they ruled on behalf of the school board, but they did say that we do recognize that this is a problem. And this is some of the other images of the women and their children from Brown v. Board of Education. So let's talk very quickly about the other four cases. South Carolina was the first case filed in Charleston, South Carolina in nineteen fifty. That was what's commonly known as Briggs v. Elliott. Inadequate schools, long commutes to segregated schools with no bus transportation. Remember, these were the issues that the NAACP was first arguing. So what happens? U.S. District Court rules against the petitioners. Briggs was an African American family. Appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court. This was one of the African American schools the children went to. No indoor plumbing, no source of heat, no school buses. Typical segregated school in the American South. Another nineteen fifty-one case is Delaware. This is actually where I was earlier in the week. So two cases with identical issues, inequality in segregated schools, no bus transportation. Separate but equal had been violated, but the decision did not apply broadly through the entire state of Delaware. So the school board, who was victorious in that case, they decided to appeal to the Supreme Court. They didn't like that. They didn't like that separate but equal, they were being told, had been violated. They did not like that, so they appealed that as part of the Brown v. Board, the five court cases. This is in Virginia, Farmville, Virginia, commonly known as Davis v. County, Prince Edward County. Inadequate and overcrowded schools. They opened a high school for inadequate adequacy of a hundred and eighty students. The next year, there were four hundred and twenty-five students attending that school. They built the school knowing that it was already inadequate. It was already obsolete when they constructed it. So in that case, Dorothy Davis was a high school student. She sued her school board along with a lot of other students. And in this case, the district court ruled in favor of the school board, but the NAACP appealed to the Supreme Court. We're almost there, guys. And the last case was Washington, D.C. nineteen fifty-one. Spotswood Thomas Balling, one of the petitioners. Melvin Sharp was the president of the school district, District of Columbia. Substandard facilities, out-of-date textbooks. This is a brand-new middle school, John Philip Susan Middle School, that was half-empty when it was constructed. African American children walked past it because they weren't allowed to attend that middle school. Black students denied the entry to attend that half-middle school. Federal District Court, because this was not a state, ruled against the plaintiffs, and the NAACP appealed to the Supreme Court. So again, those are the five, very quickly, five court cases of Brown v. Board. So NAACP argument, we won't talk a lot about this. Separate schools were inherently unequal. We've talked about that, the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment tended to make black children feel inferior to white children. Elementary schools in first-class cities here in Kansas, they were already equal to the white elementary schools. But what the NAACP had to do was they had to prove that segregation itself was unconstitutional and again, violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. There's Thurgood Marshall, became the first African American Supreme Court Justice. He was also defending, or defending these cases, presenting the appeal to the Supreme Court on behalf of the five communities. So what does the Supreme Court say? We conclude in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. And again, they had heard almost two years of all that lower court testimony. This wasn't a quick decision. They'd gone into multiple sessions to try to make a decision on this. But this was the days when the Supreme Court, nine Supreme Court judges, all men, all white men, would say to each other, this is how we are deciding this case. Even though there might be a dissension, there was a decision that we are unanimously going to agree on this case, especially something like this. So in their Supreme Court decision, May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four, the separation of children in public schools for no other reason than race was a violation of the equal protection clause of the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments and was therefore unconstitutional. So as you can imagine, this was a big deal across the United States. Slowly became a bigger and bigger deal. This is the front page of the Topeka State Journal newspaper, School Segregation Ban. This is actually the afternoon-evening edition of the paper, May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four. But the Supreme Court realized something. They forgot to say how quickly they wanted this to happen. So they go back to the next year, December of fifty-five, and they call Brown two. And they say, with all deliberate speed, get your school districts desegregated and integrated as quickly as you can. So that was the second Brown two, May seventeenth, excuse me, December of nineteen fifty-five, after the May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four decision. With all deliberate speed. You might have heard that expression. So anticipating a Supreme Court ruling in favor of the integration of public schools in Topeka, in the fall of nineteen fifty-three, they decide to start integrating. The school district in Topeka starts to integrate. That's the school image we've already talked about. There's Alice Fay right there. And this is one of the all-white elementary schools in the Topeka. Can you see how similar the classrooms are? Again, same quality of construction, but fully segregated by race. So again, by nineteen fifty-five, the school district in Topeka is going to be almost fully integrated. They didn't waste any time. Some of the school districts, the South Carolina School District, Somerton, the community I showed you, nineteen sixty-six for the elementary schools there. The high schools integrated in nineteen seventy, sixteen years after Brown. The Farmville, Virginia case, they just closed the entire school district for five years. Children were twenty-two years old when they were graduating from high school. They just closed everything for five years. So what did the Brown court case and the Supreme Court decision of May fifty-four and December of fifty-five, what happened after Brown? Fueled direct action of the modern civil rights movement in the United States. And just look at these events that took place after Brown v. Board seventy years ago. Rosa Parks Civil Rights Act of nineteen fifty-seven. March on Washington in nineteen sixty-three. Equal Pay Act of nineteen sixty-three. Sixteenth Street Baptist Church bombing, Birmingham in nineteen sixty-three. Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Selma to Montgomery March nineteen sixty-five. Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five and the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. All of these were efforts to dismantle the rest of separate but equal in the United States. So again, what did Brown do? We began the process of dismantling, but only in regards to public educational facilities. May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four. So what happens to our school Monroe? So again, it's integrated by nineteen fifty-five, but it was always a neighborhood of color. Okay, that was always the neighborhood children that were attending Monroe Elementary. So by nineteen seventy-five, there's no longer a need for the school. So the school district decides to close the school. This is some of the last pictures, just to show you that it was always a neighborhood of color in terms of the students. But anybody was now legally allowed to attend Brown after nineteen fifty-four. So what happens to the building? School district no longer needs it. It goes through a series of owners, like a lot of public buildings do, large, large public buildings. In the nineteen eighties, a company buys it, the construction company buys it, and they decide to remove load-bearing walls between classrooms. They decide to shove their construction equipment inside of the building, and the building starts to literally fall apart. So that's what the typical classroom. You can see where some of the walls have been taken out between the classrooms there. This is what our hallway looked like when the construction company owned it. All the original doors were sold off, all the original light fixtures. Most of those really unique features of a school from nineteen twenty-seven were gone. But by nineteen ninety, there was a real fear that the school was going to be demolished. And so the Brown Foundation for Educational Excellence and Research, led by Oliver Brown's daughter, remember Oliver Brown, the only man? His daughter Cheryl Brown Henderson, she created a nonprofit foundation. And one of the main reasons they created that was to save this school. So she starts pushing for legislation to protect and honor the resource. And finally, a savior is found. The Trust for Public Land purchases the building and grounds in nineteen ninety-one. There was a real threat that the school was going to be demolished, and they were going to create used storets on the land where that school was located. Remember the other dates of the schools? You saw that all the rest of the schools had either closed, the four African American elementary schools. This one was the only one that was left. This was also the school that their daughter Linda Brown had attended for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. So there was national significance, there was local significance, and they realized that this was a resource that needed to be saved. So Monroe Elementary School became a national historic landmark in nineteen ninety-one. This is right outside of our building. And October twenty-sixth nineteen ninety-two, President George H.W. Bush signed the Brown v. Board, excuse me, signed the Brown v. Board of Education National Historic Side Act. So all of those things happened after Linda Brown got involved, Linda Brown's sister Cheryl got involved with the court case. And then finally, when does the Park Service get involved in this? Nineteen ninety-three, title to the school and grounds were conveyed to the National Park Service. We can't typically acquire properties. We can actually not purchase properties, but they can be conveyed to the Park Service. So in ninety-three, Trust for Public Land turns it over to the National Park Service. We spend about eight, nine years taking this shell of a building and opening up our exhibits and our galleries. Visitor Center with interpret exhibits, a restored kindergarten classroom. This is what the kindergarten classroom looked like. This is what it looks like today. And other parts of the building had been restored as well. This is one of our exhibits. If you come to the Brown v. Board, you can go through some of our exhibits here. Quickly run through these. And then something else happened. So we get the building in nineteen ninety-three. In two thousand and four, you might recognize this guy. In Texas, they call him Shrub, because he's the junior Bush, right? George W. Bush. I was, lived in Texas for a while, they called him Shrub. So Shrub was on Brown v. Board, May seventeenth, two thousand and four, for the grand opening of our building in the museum. You can see, he's right outside of Monroe Elementary. And that was also the fiftieth anniversary of Brown v. Board, nineteen fifty-four to two thousand and four. That was a big, big event. Those of you in Kansas might remember that. Governor Sebelius was there, lots and lots of dignitaries were there as well. Big event that was happening at Brown v. Board. And then something else has happened in the last couple of years. So we had President Bush in two thousand and four. In twenty twenty-two, President Biden, Vice President Harris, Representative Clyburn, Secretary of the Interior, Deb Haaland, and lots of other interested parties did something really, really unique. And at that time, they took all five of the lawsuit sites. So three in Delaware, District of Columbia, Virginia, Topeka, and then two in Somerton, South Carolina, and they created a historical park. So in twenty twenty-two, we went from a single site, Brown v. Board of Education in Topeka, to Brown v. Board of Education National Historical Park in twenty twenty-two. That only happened two years ago, and we're still trying to get used to it happening. But it was a really, really big decision. Because this doesn't often happen, especially multi-state properties. So that was a really, really big thing. While most of these sites are either independently operated, some of them are still operating as a school. One is operating as a museum. They will be affiliated sites, but the main site will still be in Topeka, Kansas. That's where the National Historical Park is going to be based. We are going to, in the next year or so, we are going to be opening a visitor's center in Somerton, South Carolina. That's where the Briggs v. Elliott case happened. They have an all-black Scots Branch High School and an all-white high school in that community. We are acquiring these two properties. These are being conveyed to the National Park Service. And we'll have a visitor's center and all the rest of the other aspects of the National Park Service will be open there in Somerton, South Carolina in the next year or so. And that was all allowed by the enabling legislation when the park was created. All right, so recent events, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Last fall, a year ago this time, I was thinking, how can we celebrate seventy years of Brown v. Board at our park? And I decided to invite every former student I could find. Every former student from those four African American elementary schools. Teachers, janitors, students, anybody that had any affiliation with those four schools. And we planned this big event, so you can see the schools, Buchanan, McKinley, Washington, and Monroe. And I'll tell you, we had over three hundred people in our auditorium. My oldest student, not this woman, my oldest student was ninety-eight years old, who had not been in Brown since she graduated from the sixth grade. They came back and we had a day of celebration. It's a commemoration to honor those former students and those teachers and everybody else that was affiliated with those four elementary schools. So that's one of our programming events in the morning. This is our auditorium inside of the building. By the way, for those of you that played basketball in an auditorium when you were a kid, these are glass light fixtures from nineteen twenty-seven. I don't know how you played. Maybe you didn't have that big of a reach. It was sort of a half-court that they played, but those are original light fixtures to nineteen twenty-seven in our auditorium. And I show you this picture because this woman is near and dear to my heart. This is Alice Fay Lee, who after seventy-five years came back to her elementary school. And she's one of those students that was pictured in that image from nineteen forty-nine. Imagine what she must have experienced in life as a woman of color with no color, attending a racially segregated elementary school. So grudgingly, she posed for that picture. But it was a great success. It was really, really a great success, and I'm really glad we put the event together. And then lastly, one thing that we do in our auditorium that we're extremely proud of. Every third month, we hold naturalization ceremonies for new U.S. citizens in our auditorium. We feel like it's a very fitting use of our auditorium space. So fifty to sixty new U.S. citizens every three, three to four months in our auditorium with judges and bands and all kinds of things happening there. Everybody brings every family member they have and friends, and it's always a really, really, really moving experience in our auditorium. So lastly, plug for those of you visiting the state Capitol. Of course, here's our beautiful state Capitol. Did you know that in twenty eighteen, Kansas City artist Michael Young created this beautiful mural right outside the Kansas Supreme Court, located on the third floor of the state Capitol? This mural shows you everything you needed to know about Brown v. Board. And just like John Brown downstairs on the second floor, it's a rather large mural. But that was hard fought to get that mural to go inside of our state Capitol. So if you do go to the state Capitol for my favorite thing, the dome tour, how many of you have been on the dome tour? Two hundred and ninety-six steps up inside of the dome, and you get to go to the outside. 296 steps up inside of the dome, and you get to go to the outside of the building. It's a really, really free thing to do inside of our state capitol. When you go to the state capitol for your dome tour, don't forget to see the Brown v. Board of Education mural right outside of the Kansas Supreme Court. And with that, a very big thank you for letting me come and give you this presentation on Brown v. Board at 70, a brief history. So thank you very much. So I know that there are some of you that are interested in a career with the Park Service. That is my email address. I'm happy to answer any emails that anybody may have. If you are looking for an opportunity with the Park Service, go to NPS Pathways, the Pathways Program. That's for college students or recent college graduates, and it creates almost an instant entree into the Park Service because it offers internships and opportunities at parks across the country. It's called the Pathways Program, so be sure and check that out. If not, it is very, very, very tough to get on with the National Park Service. So, any questions? Anybody have any questions about anything I presented today?
I have a comment.
Yes.
It isn't over yet. We lived in Beaufort, South Carolina in 1994, right on the coast. We sent our child to public school in public, Kansas, that's what you did. When we got there, there was two black kindergarten teachers who argued in front of us whose class their son was going to be in. And we went downhill from there. And they were told by neighbors that, you know, well, if you want a better school, you know, you go to a private school down here. And so that's how they're segregating themselves, you know, who's paid to go to a private school.
Yeah, so South Dakota, South Dakota?
South Carolina.
South Carolina. A couple of African American kids attending an all-white school. And what year was that?
1994.
1994.
And there is very strong discrimination yet. They're just getting around the law in very interesting ways. Beside our house was an empty lot, and then another house. We'd like to be friends with the other house, and we said, you know, why is it an empty lot? He said, I bought that so I would never have to live beside a black family.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, real strong feelings there.
Yeah, yeah. You know, May 17, 1954 was only 70 years ago. One of the things we tell people when they come into the building, how many of you have grandparents or great-grandparents of that age? And remember what it was like in their lives, if they experienced any of that. But what happened in a lot of those communities across the country, they just pulled all of the white children out of the public schools and put them into a brand-new school, often with a Christian-based curriculum. And often, that was the way of controlling and allowing certain students to attend those schools. And that happened all across the country. The other thing that happened after May 54 was an increase in homeschooling. Homeschooling really started to take off in the United States after May 17, 1954, and it was all an effort to keep schools segregated. And as you all know, and as this lady pointed out, it still exists today. It may be called gerrymandering of voting districts. It may have a different name, but segregation unfortunately still exists in many ways, shapes, and forms in the United States. But I just wanted to present this to you and really, really point out the challenges and what's happened with Brown v. Board in the last 70 years. And hopefully, we'll get more of you to come to the park now. Don't forget, we're right on I-70, Adams exit. Go ahead and pull off on Adams, and any of us will be happy to give you a tour through the building.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm just curious, how many other families besides the Brown family are actively involved in the park? Like, do you see any of the other families that were involved in the case that come back and are interested?
Yeah.
Or is it just the Brown family?
It's a great question. So of the 13 plaintiffs, all of the plaintiffs have passed. A lot of their children have passed away, but we do have some children that are still pretty active in our, what they call their alumni association at Monroe Elementary. But the women did not necessarily want to be known. They were in many ways glad that Oliver Brown became the face of the case so that they could just sort of, you know, live their lives without much fanfare or recognition. But the Brown family has always been very clear. This case is not about us. It's about 13 plaintiffs representing 20 children in the city of Topeka. Now, were crosses burned in the front yards in Topeka? No. Did those women lose their jobs? No. Most of those women were homemakers. Oliver took a pastor job. He was a part-time pastor and a welder with the BNS Railroad, BNSF Railroad. So he moved outside of Topeka. They did come back, and they attended integrated schools at that point. But imagine the courage and the bravery it took all those years ago to stand up to a school board and to stand up not only to a school board, but an entire state system that was designed to segregate elementary schools. And again, that was happening across the state of Kansas, in the free state, and in our case, the capital city of the free state. So thanks again. Pleasure. I really enjoyed it. Thanks very much.
I was just going to ask, because I know like a lot of young folks go on field trips to the site, and how do you get the message of the case to resonate with the younger demographic? To get it to sink in?
Yeah, so the question is, how do we get the case to resonate? We hope we're doing a good job. Our job as Park Service Rangers is to present the facts and to provide the themes and to hope that something sticks when people are walking out. But we often have times, we're handing out tissues throughout the day. People get so emotional when they're inside of our building, so I think we're doing a good job. But we hope that. We really do hope that, so. All right, so Sam, where's Sam? Sam, there are snacks in the back?
Yes.
Some hors d'oeuvres in the back, and feel free to help yourself. I'll be up front, answer any other questions you may have. Thank you again.